Okay, here we go. We're gonna be up and ready. Three, two, one. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Wednesday, October 26, 2022 Park and Rec Commission Meeting. We'll go around and first order of business is to introduce ourselves. I am Jim O'Connor, the Chair.
Hi, I'm Dave Corus.
Linda Cantor.
Bill Nicoletti.
Debbie Davis.
Steve Bespeuder.
Chuck Stackpole.
Jack Pritchard.
Jim Roney.
Dan Lynch.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome. It's beautiful outside. The fall colors are awesome. So we have number two is public dialogue. Do we have someone in the public that would like to talk? Come on up. I'm sure he'll check to make sure it's on.
Oh, get that box out there.
Could you state your name? Yeah, right there. It's good.
You want me to check it? Is that what you said?
No.
It's good.
Jimmy, just get that box out of there.
I'm just gonna move that box for you. That's all.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
You got it. Erica Higgins, 303 Drummond Road. I did send some of the board members a letter yesterday. I apologize that I didn't have everyone's email. Just wanted to kind of give everybody a heads up as to why I was going to be here tonight. I am a mom of three boys. Some board member here has treated him and one of my oldest and taken great care of him. Thank you, Jim. But I am a mom of three boys who are very active in athletics in the town. And my husband and I have lived here for 12 years, and we're extremely concerned about the forward motion of the recreational facilities for the town. I'm speaking for a lot of parents out there. I wish there were more, but there I just left the swim meet where my middle son is, and we've got practice and all kinds of stuff, so I appreciate what goes on for other parents that are busy, but I am speaking for many of them. One of the things that has come up is the recent vote on the fields at Fred Wolf Park. And my question to the Park and Rec is, why would we not want to discuss growing those fields, whether it's fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, lacrosse? I don't understand in a town that's growing and more families are coming to town, why that has to get shut down for $375 in rent. It does not bring revenue to the town, and more fields would. They would bring tournaments. They would bring multitudes of different things. And when you look at Milford, they have hoops by the highway in the summer. They have all these wonderful things for their kids that makes it extremely attractive. We have none of that. And I wondered why. Why would we make a motion to do something without further investigation and actually looking to the benefit of the children of the town? The next is the parking. I did hear in reading the minutes from last month that there's no issue with parking at Fred Wolf Park. I was there this weekend. It was a disaster. There were kids running. There was no parking available. I parked all the way at the end next to the fields that aren't being utilized. There were people parking perpendicular, parallel, upside down. It was
What time?
It was broad daylight and
What time?
That my son's game was at 3 o'clock.
All right.
Broad daylight.
He was there at 1:00. Wasn't a problem.
There were four games going on. So unfortunately, there were a lot of people from other towns. It was a Clinton Day, so there were a lot of families from Clinton where I happened to grow up. Comments were made by a lot of the guys and girls I graduated from high school with and said, you guys have all this land. Like Peters Complex, where I grew up in Clinton, is a gorgeous. There's fields. There's skate parks. There's oh, I don't know if any of you have been there. It is absolutely beautiful. Flush toilets, novel concept. All of those things are in place of other towns. We're Orange. People move here for the town. They move here for the schools. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to invest in our kids and allow them more recreational places to be and to hang out with their friends. That brings me to the outdoor basketball courts. I did want to correct myself because I did not know that the basketball courts inside were being redone, so good job. I'm very happy about that. But the outdoor basketball courts. My oldest son has been playing basketball since I think he could hold a ball. He is now a freshman at Amity. He plays travel basketball, and a lot of his friends do as well. I can't tell you how many times they have gone up there in hopes that it would be resurfaced and there would actually be nets on the basketball hoops. What are we doing? Why do we even have that? There's no fencing. There's no lighting. It's uneven during the pandemic. Kids were trying to go up there and play. There were no nets. We literally look worse than the inner city right now. I mean, we are Orange, Connecticut, and we can't have nets on our basketball. I'm sorry? I'm trying. I'm trying to advocate for children. The other thing is, I don't understand why everything has to be a battle for kids in town. The comments sometimes are very negative, and there's a lot of parents that really want the best for their kids. And as a park and rec, that's your job. That is what you're here to do. Our trails and our open space, all of that is supposed to be beautiful, and it is. But the places where kids can actually benefit are not what they could be. The other thing that I would like to say is, as a park and rec commission, I find and I was looking at a bunch of the minutes, and there's not always a quorum of people. There's not always enough of you to make these decisions. And I did was told, and this came from a concerned parent, that over the summer, they're the you're the only commission that isn't in session during the summer, whereas all the other commissions are. So I think that that is a concern, too, where summer camp, you do a great job, by the way. All of my kids have gone through it, is the busiest time, the outdoor side, all of the hiking trails, everything, that's the busiest time for park and rec. So I think that's the time where you should all really be as involved as possible in having these meetings to make these changes. And I don't think that we're going to move forward as a town with our children. And again, this is all about the kids. If we aren't open-minded and we don't start making changes and really try to do the best. I do ask that you revisit the fields. I really do. And I think that there's going to be some more to come in regards to that. I think there are so many parents that are really upset with how it's been handled.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Want me to listen?
No, you can. You can either listen up there or you can sit down. It's up to you.
Whatever you want me to do.
So the vote, so just to clarify, the vote wasn't to not talk about fields. This this commission is always open to any dialogue that any group has. Not only three years ago, if you look in the back, I've been part of lacrosse for 25 years in this town. We didn't have fields. We developed. I got down on my hands and knees, picked rocks in that in those back two fields. We did that. At the baseball fields, we've added, we've added two parking lots to make it safer since I've been on this commission. We are always looking to add. This this that Tom Pizano always talks about is the Fred Wolf Plan. We didn't say we didn't change that. What we said is, when we have viable options, we will discuss it. Right now, there we don't have field space right now to discuss. If the soccer would come to us with a viable option, we've been waiting for soccer to bring porta potties to us for a long, long time, and that's they've been there the longest. We want to have urinals. We want to have
Like flush toilets?
Yeah, flush toilets, just like you're saying. We want. Nobody's brought us a proposal. We just spent all of our capital money on the tennis courts. We do something big every year. We, unlike other towns, we mow and maintain the school fields. Most towns, I'm a I'm an elementary school principal. We have our own facilities.
Yeah.
Orange, our park and rec department doesn't have that. They take care of the baseball fields. They line the baseball fields. They line the soccer fields. They line Mariel Tracy. And not only do they do the green when we have events, there's thousands of things that go on for a small, small town. We're half the size of Clinton.
No, you're the exact same size. 14,000 people.
Not lengthwise, not widthwise, no.
They actually have more fields in space than
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They are bigger.
Yeah.
Square footage.
Oh, square. Oh, you mean
Yes, square footage.
Oh.
People wise, maybe not.
No, they're the same.
But but the fact is, is we don't have as much space. When people come to us, High Plains, we continually redo it. It's there's always additions, the carnival, the, you know, the the Fall Country Fair are adding things to that. We have a wonderful softball program, and I'm sure everyone here can add, I agree, as parents, when we go from one generation to the next, we want to continue to make everything better. I spent my entire entire life working to get AstroTurf up at up at the high school. Three, three. This was the fourth time
I know.
that it took for us to get it approved. Three, you know, three times failed, three towns, and the town not and Orange voted against it. So it wasn't, it wasn't the other towns that always voted against athletics and fields and supports, and we need to have those. We have in this plan. We love an Astro multi-turf field. We love that.
So can we use that plan?
The plan comes in when there are dollars, dollars and cents. We have dollars. We have to apply to the state. We there's only so much to go around. Right now, we're inflation at 8%. I don't expect a big infusion of dollars. We we had to cut two years ago, our assistant director during COVID. We had, we had a wonderful assistant director that ran the summer program because the Board of Finance cut our staff. So we are running a really pretty big program. We offer more than most. We don't. We're not the size of Milford. We don't get the state funding that Mil Eisenhower gets state funding after state funding. Even Clinton, when they sold the high school, they redid all those facilities, the state did, and those developers. We don't have any place to sell the developers like there. So we're a unique situation. We always want to get better. We agree with you. We can always do better.
So what can we do as parents? Is it going to take fundraising? Is it going to take things like that to make moves?
Well, I think what we have to do as a community, and this is just my opinion, and I let everyone speak as well. We what are the needs, actually, right now as we stand? Because this was, this was a base. We do agree that one of our priorities is tennis courts down at Fred Wolf. Okay, that's that's on our that's on our docket. We do agree that eventually those courts in the back of High Plains need to get fixed. My son, Jim's sons, Dave's sons have all played on those courts for years. During COVID, everything went a little bit because it was different because there weren't people. We were worried about some safety concerns. So now it's back up and running, and we we've been that's been a tradition. But we do have to improve those. That's the next step. If you had seen that the tennis courts were unusable, the cracks.
Yeah, I know. I saw that.
So that was our first priority. And Debbie's been here, and Steve has been here a lot longer than me. But it's we do have priorities. We want. Right now, Soccer Association is fearful that we're taking away Mariel Tracy for our little kids, our weekend Sunday program, which is the best. That's never been discussed in official form. That's not on the table. It's never been. We spend over $100,000 to to replace the sod.
I remember that. I remember.
Okay, during elections. And that was on our bad that we had to park there. We have to vote. That's the way our society is. But it was fixed.
But could we move all of those kids? That's that's what ideally the dream would be, is to have everybody at Fred Wolf. Because I have a five-year-old, and I have an 11-year-old.
And I agree.
And one's in travel up there, and one's over here, and I can't watch both games.
No, you can't. And I I get that. But that's also part, if you ask Tom, he loves that tradition of the little kids being in that small, those small fields, and and that's the Orange Soccer Association loves that location.
He wants to move it to Fred Wolf.
He hasn't come to us with with that plan, that proposal.
Okay, so that would be starting
That's something we can we would discuss.
Okay.
We've never said no. Lacrosse came, Tom came, Fred Wolf, you know, was, we don't have an alter, you know, a big, perfect plan that's ever going to work because we do project by project because we are, we are a small funded town. That's the way baseball does it. Brinley Field, when we need to do update, when they came to us, we just had to, you know, the older kids, as you say, the Connecticut Gators, the fields at Brinley and DeGeneres are under supported because they're the older kids. The, you know, all the younger kids, the Orange Little League and softball, take care of those fields. So we stepped in.
Do we charge revenue for those?
What?
Do we charge revenue from, like, Gators? I'm sorry.
From the Gators and from the grind? Yeah, that's actually, that's something that this commission started years ago. We didn't. So, yeah, the outside organizations pay for their time at the field.
Because that would be ideal for something like Fred Wolf Park, is to have that income and that revenue.
I agree. Travel, travel soccer, you know, does something. Yeah.
They pay that Fred Wolf Park.
I deal with all the outside teams.
So the camps, anything, we do. And that's how we use that money to, you know, to upgrade things, tables, the picnic tables here at High Plains, any of those kind of little projects. I mean, we could go on and on and on. But you I agree, there has to be next steps. Next steps is, is, you know, if you have a big donor, a big sponsor, there's somebody out there that has big money, we'd love to get involved with them. We've never said no.
Well, I think knowing like that this is something that is entertainable and not shut down. Because if you read the minutes, it looks like it's off the table.
What what I don't want to get into is every month us arguing about the playground.
Well, that that $27,000 for curbing probably could have waited until after the playground got put in.
That's the Playground Committee. That's the right place to go and talk to. This this committee, it has nothing to do with the playground. That's what I'm saying is that I want us to be doing.
Yeah, you guys don't have a
Yeah, I want us to do useful things with our time. That's and if I if that was wrong, that's my fault, and I'll take full responsibility. I just, I don't want to come to these meetings and go around in full circles
No.
every time. I think it was frustrating for us as a committee.
Well, and again, that's not why I'm really here about, like,
Yeah.
let's let's move forward with a productive plan. Listen, I I've worked in healthcare for 18 years. I take care of patients all day long. I want to be a mom at the end of the day.
Yeah.
And I want these kids to enjoy themselves.
And we want you to be a mom, and we want to have open dialogue. We've never said no to anybody who's had. If you see the golf disc course, kids, people come, and I my wife walks the the High Plains every day. They come from all over New England to ours because we're the only ones that have kept a golf disc. It came in as a big fad, and then it's gone down. But they were the only place. So they come from all over. We're willing to work with people, do things. But I think it has to be a two-way street, and we're here. And one of the reasons we didn't meet and have a quorum on the commission on the on the summers, we're a little bit like of a Board of Ed. During the summer, our park is running. The Board of Eds don't meet during the summer. I've been part of it for 32 years because our camp is what we're taking. He's working till 8 o'clock at night to get camp, like, no tomorrow. I mean, he's like a full-day school.
Listen, he does a good job.
His people. So for us to, what's His people, so for us to, what's on our agenda? We, we didn't see anything that was hugely important that we were going to change. If somebody has that as a commission, we don't mind meeting, we just have seen over the last, I've been on this commission for 15 years. Over the summers, our line items are very simple, our meetings last 20 minutes and we don't really make a lot of decisions because business is down, it's just summer.
Unfortunately, two of the months during the summer, we didn't have enough people, people were on vacation, people were away. It's not like we don't have the meetings, we just didn't have enough quorum.
Quorum, like you said, I mean, you were right about your facts.
Okay.
Yeah, but we do have meetings.
Understood, totally understood.
And, but one of the suggestions here is that we try to compact ours so we have more productive meetings. So we are more effective as a commission and I think that's something we were going to look at. So I don't, I didn't want to not answer your question because you are right, we didn't have quorum.
And I appreciate your transparency, there's, that's lacking, so I appreciate, not from here, but from other parts of the town, so I appreciate that.
And things, when you watch it, it's just like, listen, I tell, I tell my wife all the time, Facebook only says one, only, you only see one side, the happy side of people. And, and this is, this is where we come to have dialogue and really, it, we, it needs to be two way dialogue. And we're, we're, we're always willing to work with everybody, it might not always, you might not get the results as quickly as you want. I know I've been frustrated, I was frustrated for 17 years, I didn't have feel, lacrosse fields. The Soccer Association wouldn't even let us on their fields. We were using the back of High Plains.
For our community and that's one thing.
And I agree, so I, so I've sat on that side, I've been there, I know how frustrating it is. So I think we have a duty as a commission to always better ourselves.
So is there a way that we can come up with like a punch list as, you know, these concerns have come up over time? And I'm just here speaking about them because others don't.
I think the best way that we've seen this been really successful is through the organizations. We allow our, our town organizations, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, we allow them a lot of autonomy within the organization. We actually have them come here and they, and they ask us for things, we ask them for things. It's a real good back and forth, we've had great work with all the presidents over the years. And, you know, really, this is the first disagreement that we've had with Tom and it really wasn't us, it was because we weren't part of the playground committee. That was at the first selectman's office, but we support it, obviously a playground, we need it. And with the new rules that a lot of people don't know, Fred Wolf is one of the only places we can have it because it can't go out of school because nobody's allowed in that property during the day.
Yeah, no, totally, I understand that, I just don't want a child to get killed.
If we want some more soccer fields, the soccer organization should put a proposal together.
Okay.
Could come to us with a feasible, and what I was saying, phase six isn't an option for us to discuss, but it's not a.
We don't even have to call it phase six, we can just call it the cornfield redo or whatever you want to call it.
That has more to do with the first selectman, the selectman.
Yeah, we're working that angle too.
Field opportunities, if there's field space, and I would tell you, the field space that is important because, you know, we had, we couldn't follow this plan exactly when we actually, we had, you know, we had, I'll tell you now. If it wasn't for our farmers and our people, we were $80,000 short for the lacrosse field. We, they, they gave their own time, they brought in their own dozers, their own equipment, their own even, I think the only thing we reimbursed them for, it was gas. You know, because it's so expensive and they put their own blood, sweat and tears. Rick Cap, I mean, I, I owe that man, oh God, I can't even say how much I owe that gentleman. He has done everything for the lacrosse program since I met him 22 years ago when I was lacrosse. He, he will give blood, sweat and tears, but we wouldn't have those without it. So I think it has to come from the organization, I think we're always willing to look at open space.
Fair enough.
And open spaces, we have a lot more than some, some towns and we have to maintain it, I agree.
And then the basketball courts.
Yes, that's going to be, so that, I think that's a great thought, it was, it's on our horizon, but it's something we should.
I can answer those quick, I won't take any more of your time.
No, no, I'm.
Two things to cover that you mentioned, the basketball courts, yes. I've, we put in for capital planning items every year, we don't get everything we want. The tennis courts two years ago cost $150,000, they were done correctly, the way you're supposed to do. Some projects in town don't get done correctly. This one was done good, we picked a viable company, it cost a little money, but we had the money to do it, capital planning came through, those courts are now done. Down the road, down at Fred Wolf Park, hopefully those pickleball courts will be going down there. But again, it takes time, things don't happen overnight. The basketball courts are going in with my capital planning this year, they're desperately needed.
So, so the first selectman, what I would suggest is Ralph, Ralph Oaken Quest runs the capital plan. And we, obviously, everybody, the schools, the police, fire department, everybody's going, everybody's going for something.
There's only a little bit of money that goes out, so they, it gets, and they do the best job possible, they distribute it out to each group. We got our new lawnmower about eight years ago, it took me five or six years to get that.
But I am sure we could raise, there are so many travel teams and kids in this town and parents that would probably not, we're not paying a hundred grand, but we could contribute towards something.
But again, it's a capital planning thing, it's going in on my list this year, hopefully we get it because they do desperately need it as the tennis courts did a couple of years ago. With the basketball hoops during the pandemic, we were probably the only courts that were open. Everybody else took their hoops down, we had them open. The only reason we took the hoops down a couple of years was because of camp, people were showing up, there was way too many people there.
Can we get it fenced in? Is that part of the plan?
That would be something we'd have to discuss.
We could dialogue that.
I've been here 22 years, they've never, obviously never been fenced in, but the tennis courts have been.
Cause I know a lot of the boys would love to go up under the light, because they love hoops by the harbor, they love playing under the lights in the summer. It's fun to play like shirts and skins and have a good time.
Something we could discuss and talk about, but yeah, those courts are on our, our docket for the capital planning.
And anything that you need from a push standpoint, and again, parents will rally around you because this is not just Erica Higgins speaking, this is a lot of very concerned parents that want this. So please, I'm offering, I will help however I can.
We, we do have something new that's actually come full circle. In the winter, we have put in, we'll be putting in a little skating area that'll be, that will have lights and that goes for when it gets cold, but we're, we're doing that, it was in, because you know, Ray's Pond, not everybody wants to go down there and, and hang with the hockey players, so they want a little place where they can teach to go. So it's a nice little addition, we are always thinking of, of multi opportunities and I think that's important. Jim?
I had somebody in town ask me a question and I couldn't answer the question about grants. And there's comment was, there's, there's, there's so much grant money out there that doesn't get used. Why do some towns find a way to get that money and some grant writers? And so that, that was, that's what I.
That's another option.
That was my answer, as I said, I don't really know who writes for our grants, I'm not, I don't know that answer and apparently it's, it's kind of, it sounds like we don't really have anybody dedicated to that, but perhaps.
I'll learn how to grant write on the internet.
Perhaps there's somebody in the audience or somebody in your, in your group that would investigate grants. Cause there, in, in any business, in any, there are grants available, not just for.
That just came up recently a little league too.
Not just for our committee, but there are grants available in society that people can look for free money.
So.
And so perhaps that's something that you can investigate with you.
So to speak to that, except for the boys' lacrosse fields that were put in, both this playground and Old Tavern, if you go in and you see the left parking lot.
Oh yeah, I live there.
Yeah, so that, and so did I when I went through my days. That was both through what we call Steve Grants, which we were very lucky to ask the state for, so they were grants, we did do grant writing. This committee actually was involved.
Is it a lawyer? And that might be a stupid question to ask, but like, I have no idea.
I don't know anything about lawyer, it's not my thing.
It's opportunity, it's time, do you have a plan? It's talking to the state reps, getting their support, I'm sure he's sitting back, he has enough on his plate, but he would know how to do the state route, Mr. Davis has some experience in the grant writing, I'm sure in what goes through with the state. But that's, that's where the crux is and that's why the park and rec commission wasn't in charge of the playground and a playground committee was, was established because that was a Steve Grant. And that's the way the first selectman wanted to do it because actually that money went to the town and not through commission. So it's, and then the first, the first selectman and I did Old Tavern pretty much ourselves in that parking lot. So Jim is right, there, in a town our size, unlike, we don't have a grant writer, Milford has a grant writer because they're big. They write grants, they also, the population, all of those things equal extra money.
So if it's fair, I will take it upon myself to investigate this, thank you for the idea. And then I will email you and Dan regarding it and then anything I find out and anything, I might, obviously I can't make decisions, but I can present it. But I would really like to just take the steps to make it move forward, even if it's to help you get the basketball courts. They can use the money elsewhere, if we can get them paid for, then why not?
You are right and that we'd be all game for it, any help, anyone here else, I overtake.
Don't forget, there's fields that aren't being used down Fred Wolf Park.
There's the one field that's not playable.
The side field that, that's, that, that, that somebody.
Why isn't it playable?
So there was a men's league and I've talked to the men's league, I have not spoken to the women's league, but the men's soccer league and lacrosse, those two had tried to attempt to play on it and it was very uneven and they felt that they would be injured because of the sloping of it. I did go there recently and walked it myself and it, I, I wouldn't want my kids playing on it. I feel like it was a lot of money the town paid for something that's really not usable unfortunately. And now people are using it as a dog park. So, I mean, I feel free to walk it, but I recently did and my husband, who's usually way more level headed than I am, he walked it and he felt the same way.
So we, we could take a look at it and I think what, what's problem is, is you right now, and one of the things is, and he's not here and I, I'd say, he wasn't for us using that piece or the playground committee using that piece to, to clear. And, and it just happened to be, we cleared it, we didn't spend a lot of money on that.
I heard that irrigation was like very expensive.
I, it, it wasn't, you know, it, I don't know the exact dollars, I'd like to.
I think forty thousand.
That's what I thought, yeah, that's exactly the number.
And the town, I believe Jim, spent 115,000 on the lacrosse fields.
And the town spends that and just, and so everyone knows is soccer is able to maintain a lot of their money because the town pays for soccer, lacrosse, that field, for, for all the irrigation, for the water bill. Also for baseball, we pay for all of that, that's a huge, you know, the dollars that the town takes on.
Excuse me, the town pays for sanitation, lining the fields, maintenance, insurance. They do a lot.
Yeah.
The only thing soccer pays for, I believe, is fertilizer.
Yeah, fertilizer, they have that, Tom, Tom has always done the fertilizing deal with Rick Cap.
Yep, and then they pay for the insurance for all the kids and that, which is separate, of course.
And we get double coverage because we're a town, you have to identify, you know, we have to protect everybody, so it works so we can help each other on that.
Of course.
If there is any injuries, which we've had, if there's car accidents, things like that. And you know, and parking's never going to be perfect when you have human.
No, but there's like no lines, there's no handicap parking.
We did lines a few years ago down there.
Somebody took the handicap signs that were put up there.
So those are the kind of things we have to stay on top of, you're right.
My parents are elderly, they can't come watch games.
And they need spots, you're right. Any other comments or thoughts from the commission, I think I've taken up.
Just know that, I appreciate you, I really do. I want you, we appreciate you, the parents appreciate you, it's just how can we step forward?
Yeah, and I agree and I, I, I think there's been some loss in communication in some of the, in some of the dialogue that goes here because it's, we, listen, we love Tom, we support Tom.
And again, this is not about, this is me just being a mom.
But, but he's, that's where we've been going around the same circle, so that's where I wasn't ready, you know.
No, 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 that transparency is the best thing and I appreciate it, so thank you all.
Thank you for taking your time.
Appreciate you, so thank you.
Okay, here we go. Approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 28th? Dave, that's the, we have the motion, who seconds? Linda, second, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here.
Okay. Perfect, so we have two abstentions, any changes, deletions, comments? No, it looked good to me, okay, we're good. Motion to approve, just everybody, since you'll say abstain, we already, yeah. You saw something?
No, the minutes are, I, I can't say because I wasn't here.
Well, the minutes were done, so Jim knows, the minutes were done remotely.
Okay.
So it was a little bit different take than we're used to, that's what I would say. So let's have an official vote, because we voted to accept them and we had the second and we said all in favor. Let's do it again, so we have the abstentions. We have which abstentions, Chuck and Jim, okay, good, you got it? Okay, I can't see you back there, I'm, you know, I'm getting old, my eyes aren't great, okay. Questions from previous meeting, old business, Danny?
A couple of things, I'll go over before I do the director's report. Last month, Linda Kanter asked about the division of how the commission members are split. I did ask first selectman's office about how many Democrats and Republicans are on the commission, that did come up. They're, they're hand, they're picked by, by the first selectman, there's no number total of who, how many Democrats or Republicans are on the commission, so I did ask about it, it's not a big deal, it's just.
It's a good question.
Brought up?
No, it's all right, it's all right.
There are some towns, I know the town I live in, or city I live in is, there has to be five and four or, you know, like an even split. Some towns are different, but they are picked by the first selectman and then voted on at the board of selectman meeting, so that's how it works. For anybody, there was a couple of other people that were asking about it last month.
Yeah, and I, I think what we will say, and Joe Lembo always echoed this, is that I couldn't tell in here who's who, it's all about us wanting to do what's right, that's the most important thing. Yeah, yeah, I don't know and that's, and it doesn't matter to me.
Years ago, we did add this to our agenda, people like to get refreshed on what we talked about last month, it is a questions from previous meeting thing. So I kind of go, try to go over everything that we did ask last month. Some of them are miniscule, some of them are more important, so I do try to cover it, whether it's here or in the director's report. Deb Davis, I have a copy of that playground booklet that you asked for, okay? I talked to Ernie Goodwin this week about the screen, the wind screens, he gave me the company, the contact, they will be put in, in the spring.
Okay, he does a great job with that, yeah, our turf field looks awesome.
Jim floor, I was told today, at High Plains, it will be complete by this Friday.
Nice.
I am told it will be ready for election day, which was the goal. I was honestly, honestly did not think that was going to happen, but I was told today that it will. No, they went with that other like rubberized.
Rubberized, yeah.
I suggested wood floor, I got shot down, so. They're just about done, the lines are going down tomorrow, it looks beaut, it's, it's very nice. So we'll see, but hopefully it's ready for election day, that's what I was told.
And it become unsafe, I was in there four months ago and it was bad.
And then we'll have the padding put up on the back door and then on the stage.
The padding will be there Deb, I promise.
It's coming Deb, I know it took a while, but it's coming. And that was pretty much it for the questions, I'll go over everything else in my director's report.
Great, new business, grounds and facilities, Steve?
You brought up the parking rec taking care of the schools.
Yep.
I found out today, actually, I was talking to Brett Nielsen, eighty, eighty-three or eighty-four.
They started taking care of the school grounds.
Wow, wow.
Yeah.
It's been a long time and it's, it, it, it's definitely not the norm anymore in most towns. So it's, it's a, it's a huge burden on our, our small, small rec staff.
Yeah, because Brett used to have Chris's job years ago.
Oh really?
Yeah, 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 he works for Highway now.
Gotcha.
And I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you Steve.
Our guys will be working probably till the first week, seasonal guys will be there till the first week in December. And then if they choose to come back, they'll be back in, end of March, beginning of April.
That'd be, that's actually my personnel discussion, when do we move from our seasonal workers to our just full time, okay? Great, any, anything on budget, we got budget, you can look, we're about a quarter of the way through. So if you see, I looked at it before, we're around 25% to 30% of our spent yearly dollars. Not as, as we, as we talked earlier, not a huge budget, but I think we get the most bang for our buck. I'm always really proud of our staff. I happened to call the rec department, the last like three times I've called. I happened to call the rec department, the last, like, three times I've called, Dan's been answering the phones, he's been doing everything. I've been, you know, I'm impressed of how they all step up and help each other.
No, it's, like I said, I always.
It's a one-for-all, you know.
We are short-staffed, obviously, as we know, but we all work together and we do the best we can. And my staff underneath, you know, my staff is just incredible. There's three, you know, three women in there that do a fantastic job. And you hear about it at the end of every summer, but all year long. And obviously, our seasonal staff, our part-time staff, whether it's programming or at the pool, it's a top-notch, top-notch group. Who, we work for each other, we work together, and that's the key thing.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, director's report.
All right, I'll go through this quickly. Registration for the fall 2022 swim lessons and programming began on Monday, October seventeenth. Obviously, we just talked about the parks. The last grass mowings will take place this month. Fall baseball and softball will conclude the last weekend of October. Orange Soccer Association and Amity Youth Lacrosse Programs held at Mariel Tracy and Fred Wolf Park will conclude the weekend of November twelfth through the thirteenth. There's an aquatics report and a programs report. Speaking of staffing, we are very short-staffed at the pool, continuing to look for new guards. Sue is covering a lot of shifts down at the pool as well. You're talking about, you know, people answering phones in the office. I mean, she's at the pool guarding and all that more than ever. Like I said, I've been here twenty-two years. This is, no, it shouldn't be. She does have a lifeguarding class going on now. Hopefully, get some staff out of that. But it's during the day, it's hard. The young kids that we have are kids that work on the weekends or at nights, or they're involved with sports or extracurricular activities at schools. It's hard getting somebody that can work during the day at the pool, you know what I mean? So doing the best we can, but she is putting a lot of time down there. I thank her for that as well. We are beginning the second session of swim lessons, all the classes are full. Again, we're unfortunately unable to offer what we normally offer due to the instructor shortages. We are offering springboard diving, those classes are full as well. Amity has finished their dual meets for the season. They're continuing their practices for their preparation for the league and class and state open meets. Good luck to them as that upcoming with that as well. They do, they have had a very good season so far, and hopefully finish strong as she splits here in the report. So good luck to them.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Programming-wise, like I said, we start, we are offering a lot of different stuff here from youth to adults. So check it out, it's all, everything's online, everything's in my report here. We are going to have the youth basketball league program this year at the three sites. One stipulation, unfortunately, is they're not letting us use the gyms during the week for practice. So we are practicing before the games as of right now. That's the best we can do. But we do get our sites back for games on Saturdays. High Plains for seven and eight boys and girls. Mariel Tracy for nine and ten boys and girls, and middle school, Amity Middle School for eleven to thirteen boys and girls. The reason being, there's issues with the security guards and unions and all that stuff. So schools are shutting down at six o'clock when the schools of the Twenty-First Century programs are over, the after-school programs. Until I'm told differently, that's the best I can do.
Okay.
Is the program back to full teams?
Yes, we're back to the full teams, it's just that there's.
The practice, though.
Can't practice during the week.
And then that's, and that's, you know, that half of, you don't really get to know each other. The practice that hour, yeah. At that age, that just, that age was so important for me and my teams and for the kids, you know, just to get to know each other. So that on Saturday, we could, you know.
Hopefully, that changes.
You can't teach anything.
No.
It's a shame that.
You'd rather go the other way.
That the kids lose out because of a labor issue or a political issue. I mean, it's just like, that's just, that's not helping anybody.
We could talk about it until we're blue in the face until they tell me to go. I can't do anything about it.
Thank you, Dan.
And they're gonna, I'll do the best we can with, before the game, like we did last year with the three-on-three, but as of right now, that's where it stands. Hopefully, next year, we can get back to where it was with practices during the week.
Have we looked at?
And we can't use, everybody can't go to High Plains.
No, 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 no.
We got enough going on there.
What about, what about the junior highs, open space?
There's not much, they're booked during the week, I looked into that as well.
Okay, okay.
We wouldn't have a consistent.
I'm going to call the superintendent tomorrow. That's.
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just so you know, my husband had a conversation just on this, because he's been coaching for a year. And he called Scarpetti, and Mike Gray was calling him back tomorrow.
Okay.
Because he was advocating, saying, you know, I'm coaching his team, and I need to be able to do some fundamentals.
That's my contact, obviously, Mr. Gray is the.
Who's fantastic, I'll call Mike, actually.
Building's superintendent.
We've been colleagues for a number of years, so I'll call him. Great man. They could work through something, yeah, because that's, that's an important time.
I wait for them to tell me, and then we go from there. But as of right now, that's where we stand.
Perfect.
Yeah, Ski Bums will be back again this year. It's going to be for grades five through nine, just so you know. It does say five through eight here. We just got everything straight with the programming and billing, pricing for the packages for the families. Registration, I don't have an exact date, it's going to be the first or second week in November. We will be going from January thirteenth, I believe that's a Friday, through February tenth, five Fridays in a row. We'll be taking up to eighty kids, three buses full. That's where we stand. I will have an exact date for you. It'll be on our website and our online as well, when that date is actually set in stone, okay? And the Funtober at the Fairgrounds was held last week. A job well done by Community Services and Park and Recreation. Thank you to both departments. Jessica Simone, who is the Youth Services Director, spearheaded it, did a fine job. Lynn Plaskowitz, Stephanie Middleton also helped with the event. And I'd like to thank them for all their work. Both departments did a nice job with it. It was well-attended and a very well-organized event.
Awesome, thanks, Dan. Okay, so let's all take out our meeting schedule for next year, because it'll come quickly. And I think, I think what's important in front of us is that, obviously, we have to, by law, we're stuck into our date and time, because that's when we have this facility and it becomes consistent. I think with some feedback that people would like us to meet, I think that right now, maybe we don't put that on, but we can discuss maybe at a later date. Let's just keep our normal schedule that Dan put together. Because we were discussing, Jim, and some of the other people that might not have been here. We didn't see a loss of productivity from internally, but externally, obviously, if people want us, you know, are seeing that they would like us to meet, is a whole different feedback that we hadn't gotten. But internally, we were still running, getting feedback, running summer camp, executing on the things that needed to be. I think Steve, myself, others, and most of you guys all check in with Park and Rec. I think we got, I thought we got everything done. That was the out, that was the internal look. But externally, also, it's do we show that we meet and we have an opportunity for feedback from the community? And that might be a little bit different from what we've heard. So I think for right now, we vote on our twelve, and then we can always reflect and take a look at it later on, after we get some more feedback. Thoughts?
I think it's important that people understand that just because we don't have a meeting, doesn't mean that they can't come to any one of us or to the Park and Rec Department with concerns or ideas, or, it doesn't have to be a once-a-month thing. In fact, it's probably better if it's not a once-a-month thing, because you can keep the ball rolling and open lines of communication. I know that people feel like they can leave things at my office, because I get all kinds of information that's just left anonymously for me to sift through, and I end up sending some of it to Dan and, or talking to somebody if they want to tell me who they are. But, yeah, I mean, this, we're on this committee, we're accessible, and the office is open five days a week, six days a week sometimes, right? So it's not like, it's, people shouldn't feel like they have access to this commission.
Agreed.
Even if there isn't a formal meeting. And sometimes, as we all know in life, sometimes things, dialogue happens and people communicate and things get settled and ideas get shared, when it's not a formal setting. Because when the lights are on, maybe people don't say what they want to say. But when we're talking to each other, people speak freely. So, I mean, I'm not afraid to say that. So anyway, it's just food for thought.
Yeah, and then again, that was my food for thought, was the same thing, that we were struggling as a commission, and everyone here does volunteer, that we were, we weren't, for three straight months, we did not get a quorum. And like Jim said, it didn't mean we still didn't do the work. Dan still developed the packets, you received the packets, we still did the reports, we still did all, yeah. Yeah, we shared over email, things came through email, so that's fine, too. But we do need to have dates on the calendar for the year. Yes, by statute, we do. So why don't we? Adjust it during the year, that's, that's fine, too. And that's up to this committee. I just didn't want everybody to know that, I want you to be aware that that's something we are discussing. I don't know where the commission feels. We haven't really, we've been put out a post, we discussed it. Some people were happy about it, but we never went to dialogue really and vote. So that's, it is what it is.
Honestly, before you go forward with this, and you should, we should have them on the docket, like you said. But honestly, I've been working here for twenty-two years. This commission, in those twenty-two years, because I came to a lot of those meetings when I was the assistant as well, this commission meets the most regularly out of a lot of them, trust me. Besides the Board of Selectmen, we meet consistently all the time. There's a lot, I come here once or twice a week to Town Hall. On that back door, there's a lot of commissions and boards that have a lot of meetings canceled, every month.
Yeah, I think this summer might have been unusual.
This commission is very unusual.
Canceled, I know, I was traveling.
I just wanted to throw that out there, because I know, in all the years of all of our volunteer commission members, do a fantastic job and are always usually here. There was a few months that we had, people had a lot going on this summer.
And we make, and we make those decisions, and we make those decisions, you know, Dan sends out a week, gives us notice, gives us time. And, and I think he didn't, until the, until the last opportunity, we don't pull the trigger. We try to get everybody here, we totally call other people if we're one short. So we always go above and beyond to make quorum. Okay, so let's, everybody looked at, everybody good with the dates? If you're good with the dates, or you don't have any discussion, let's get a motion to approve. Counselor moved by Steve, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we unanimous. Okay.
So we'll go right over to Mary Shaw tomorrow for filing.
Perfect.
And by the way, just, all the holidays and everything are taken, are in account for. In September and October, we have a couple Jewish holidays, made sure there wasn't any issues with that. And then obviously, in November with Thanksgiving, it's a week earlier, and with the Christmas holidays in December, it's a week earlier as well.
Perfect. You always do a great job. Okay, well, obviously, we talked a lot, you know, I thought we had some good dialogue before, that's mine. Any of the commission, you guys, you know, if you have anything to say, this is a good time for any comments, thoughts, what's next steps, for anything that might be on your mind. Yeah.
I'm still concerned about the headers that are happening on the field. And I know that you've, you've paid attention to the nursing and other medical answers to that. But I was thinking about the equipment. Is there any, I just haven't kept up on what's happened.
So, so what, I can bring you an update, I know from, I get the updates on lacrosse of what we're, you know, they're actually redoing helmets, and they have to be recertified every year now. On the soccer, you know, that's a great question for Tom. When we bring soccer here, Tom can say, what is the National Federation doing to continually improve concussion protocol? Jim probably can talk maybe a little bit to it more than I can. But it's, the Federation has some really strict, we're, we're at a better place than we've ever been personally as a, as a participant, meaning a coach that I've seen. But in the, in the town, soccer, soccer, we haven't had a lot of incidents that we're aware of on this town. But that, soccer would have to answer that, lacrosse.
When they get full-page articles in the New York Times, you know that it's important.
Oh, without a doubt, it's huge, huge. So we can make it part of our presentation with soccer, because he would know the more of the day-to-day of what, how it's affecting our town and our town.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Good order, great, well, it's great to ever seeing everybody. Enjoy, and we'll see you next month, right? We'll see you soon, right? When is, it's before, it's quick. Yeah, we go shorter, remember, we see you before Thanksgiving, so we'll see you guys in a few weeks. Have a good one.
Thank you, everybody. November sixteenth.
Motion to adjourn, who, I think Steve said it. All in favor, aye.
November sixteenth, next meeting.